There is no audio.
Oh, sorry.
Hi, we can hear you. Go ahead, please.
Hello?
There was no audio.
Oh, oops. Oh, so you didn't hear any of the first part of the meeting?
Nothing at the first of the meeting. This is the first time I've had any audio.
Um, I'll, I'll do the recap. What we did was we opened the meeting and we said the pledge of allegiance. We did a roll call. Uh, all of the city council members are here in attendance. There's no changes to the orders today. There's no presentations. Uh, I was calling for oral communications. If you would like to say something on oral communications, uh, you may do so and speak up to three minutes on any item that is not on the agenda.
Was there anything else? Was there anything else you wanted to speak on?
Hearing nothing, we will close oral communications and we'll go to written communications. Are there any written communications that were received that were not distributed to city council before the meeting?
No.
No new written communications. All right, with that, we'll go to the consent calendar. We've got three items on the consent calendar. The August fifteenth regular city council meeting minutes and the August twenty ninth joint special meeting of the city council and the site and architectural commission. We've got a number two is, uh, the warrant list dated September nineteenth. Uh, and item three is the treasures report for the period ended May thirty one, twenty twenty-three. Would any member of council like to pull an item on the, uh, consent calendar? No? With that, what I'd like to do is open it, the consent calendar, uh, for comments by the public. If you're a member of the public appearing in chambers, please approach the podium and state your name. If you're appearing virtually remotely, please raise your virtual hand. No hands raised, no one's at the podium?
Move to approve the consent calendar.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
And the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. With that, uh, we have no public hearings per se. No unfinished business and we'll move to new business. We've got item one, consider community center capital campaign plan and associated budget. I believe we've got former mayor Lon Allen, who is a member of the uh, community center committee and he is on the capital campaign ad hoc committee.
Indeed. Uh, we've submitted a very detailed, uh, proposal of the capital campaign committee, which is in your materials. And I don't have anything to add to that, but if there are any questions, I'll do my best to answer them.
Okay, so what we'll do is, uh, uh, we'll ask, uh, Mr. Allen, if we, uh, questions, then we'll bring it for public comment and then we'll bring it back to council. Uh, questions for, for Mr. Allen?
No question. It was an excellent plan. Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to, to know if KCAT will be charging us for the video or broadcast?
No, they, uh, very graciously, they're doing it as a PSA, a public service announcement. So there'll be no charge whatsoever.
Okay, thank you.
With that, what I'd like to do at this point is open it for public comment. Uh, if you are here in chambers, please approach the podium and state your name. If you're appearing online, please raise your virtual hand.
Your hand raised?
And no one's at the podium. I will close public comment on this and, uh, bring it back to council. Um, I think that your target on this is a stretch goal. I think that we were talking previously of the range of a hundred thousand dollars and I see you've upped your, your game dramatically. And I commend you for that. And, and would like to let you know that we'll do everything that we can to help subject to the uh, rules and regulations, uh, regarding, what's the correct term for that? Uh, when we encourage donations? I'm sorry, there's a.
So is it?
No, there's a different one, but anyways.
Just a small comment. Since you've included your budget, it may be an opportunity. Keep in mind that we were also trying to do some veteran memorial recognition in the community center. So that may or may not help you with the campaign and that may look together also.
We're going to be we're going to be very sensitive to what motivates people to, uh, uh, you and, um, my colleague Jennifer and I have over the years been involved with a lot of fundraising for various nonprofits and so will, uh, I think the expression is, you know, different folks for different folks that will. Uh, but I think if we can raise more money, A, it reduces the, the budget drain on the city and B, uh, if we can get some gifts that come over time and I was to as we start to use the center, I suspect we will find that we need money for things. So, uh, but all suggestions will be gratefully received.
Do I, you know, ask a question also? Um, on the, uh, October seventh events, what will be included? The Libya full set of drawings, uh, what's supposed to be viewable for the?
We, we have, uh, drawings. We're also going to have, uh, the, uh, the, the KCAT thing, uh, will be out. It'll be less than a minute, but we've seen some drafts. They, they do beautiful work and the architects have done things. Uh, so, uh, yes, uh, the people will be able to see what it looks like. We want to I think, uh, create enthusiasm, uh, for the, uh, project. So, uh, we'll have all hands here and we'll be prepared to, uh, hopefully the people believe they will want to get involved. And, you know, we're accept donations of any size because we, we want to have maximum resident participation because that leads to a sense of ownership. Because we don't just want to build a community center. We want it to be very well used by the residents of our modest area.
You do. Go ahead.
Don't leave yet. I think I'm going to just stay here.
So I was going to suggest that you come to our next youth commission meeting and talk about what you're doing and see if there's a way that our youth commissioners might be able to get involved in this. I think it would be a good project for them to.
Yes, and yes.
Keith into.
If you just, uh, uh, text or email me the date, uh, uh, council member, I will be pleased to attend.
Great, thank you.
Will you take your bow? And I'm not going to sit down. I can't, I'm dismissed now.
You're dismissed.
Well, the mayor.
Well, you know, if, if you'd like to dismiss, uh, Mr. Allen, then maybe you could do that with motion.
Okay, thank you. Well, I will dismiss Mr. Allen and move that we accept the capital campaign plan and associated budget for the community center.
We have a motion.
Second?
Mayor?
Oh.
We need to.
Oh, I'm sorry. Public comment?
Oh, actually, no, we did. I mean, no, there was no comment. Sorry.
Okay.
It's okay.
I restate my motion as previous. Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Uh, with that, uh, we've got the bicycle and pedestrian master plan approval of the final BPMP. Do we have a staff report on that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we do. Good, good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. If I could, uh, have our clerk do a presentation, put it on the screen. There we go. Tonight, we're going to discuss the adoption of the bicycle pedestrian master plan for our city of Montesereno. Little background on the, on the project. The preparation of the bicycle and pedestrian master plan was commenced back in January of twenty twenty-two. The firm that, uh, we used was KTUA from San Diego. They were hired to conduct the research and prepare its draft plan for tonight. The research included the analysis of the city's network of roads, bike lanes, pedestrians, facilities, and public outreach. The draft was presented to the Better Streets Commission back in September of twenty twenty-two. KTUA budget was amended in December of twenty twenty-two to provide extra time and budget to complete the plan. And KTUA modified the final draft for commission approval. And with a few changes was unanimously approved in favor of the city council's direction on August tenth, twenty twenty-three. The intent of this extensive study allows the city council to consider adopting this plan and qualify Montesereno to apply for future grant funding opportunities. Without a master plan, the municipality is restricted from qualifying for most grant funded bicycle pedestrian improvement programs. Typical bike and pedestrian grants may require a ten to twenty percent match of funds. These opportunities allow the city to leverage general fund dollars for the maximum benefit for our community. City council will be able to evaluate potential grants and the amount of general funds that may be required to match on all future fund, uh, grant opportunities. The projects in the report, um, identify possible grant solutions with multiple locations throughout the community. These included gap closure projects, ADA modifications, pedestrian crossings, bicycle facilities, and pavement rehab. The potential pedestrian projects listed would require approximately two point six million dollars to construct. The possible bicycle recommendations are estimated at approximately four point one million dollars to construct. Potential funding sources were also identified within the plan. If adopted, staff will evaluate the potential funding sources and prepare applications in the attempt of securing the grant monies to match the identified projects. Tonight, uh, staff brings us with recommendation for the city council to adopt a city of Mon- Montesereno's bicycle pedestrian master plan by resolution. I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Uh, I'm going to sort of veer from my normal or our normal process here because I've got to go to another meeting. And for that, I have passed the gavel over to the vice mayor. But I'd like to make a couple of comments, uh, knowing that we usually ask questions first and then have public comments and then make comments. In, in, in one of my comments is I would support the motion, but it won't be here. Uh, if there was a motion to approve this, I know that it's been a long time coming and there's been a lot of work, uh, put into this. And I will say that I'm aware of some funding opportunities that are not listed uh, because of my, uh, position and what the recent developments at the, uh, Valley Transportation Authority. And I'd like to work with staff offline on that outside of this meeting because there's some things that could be done. And those are my, my comments and.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
I will.
Please let the record show that, uh, the mayor left the minute nineteen hundred seventeen hours. Or seven W P M. Thank you for the staff report. Um, council member, any question?
Just one basic question. What's the net cost of this?
The, the cost of what we purchased, paid for the plan?
Okay, so, so far we've spent for the consulting, basically, right? Approving the plan at this point, you're not spending any money on?
That is correct.
And you're not committing to spending any money?
That is correct. Any future expenses would come before you, before we decided on it.
And what is, do you have any estimate? What is the cost? Implement the plan. I guess there's going to be some subsidies, but the city's still going to pay something for it.
Each grant has its own match. We don't, we don't know what that's going to be. That's why we're going to bring it back to you for approval before we choose to spend any of those monies.
And, and you give us a number of what they will pay you in the cost.
Thank you.
My question.
That's my return.
The, if, if this project is strictly for bikes and walkers, right? Uh, what about sidewalks and crosswalks? Are they covered in, in this project?
Absolutely. That would fall into the pedestrian category.
I'm sorry?
That would fall into the pedestrian category. So they are included, yes.
So that would be included?
Yes.
Okay.
Most definitely.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Craig.
A question that I had is, has there been any input about placing a crosswalk across Winchester between the two bus stops? Has anybody contacted you or the group about this?
Not me personally, personally, but if that's something that the council would like to pursue, we'd definitely look at that. What's the grant funding?
I, I have had a few residents and I think that they're working on a petition to bring to the council to get a crosswalk like that built because it, it just isn't sensible to expect somebody to walk to Dave's Avenue so that they can cross at a light and then walk all the way back up to, uh, you know, Vineland or Eaton or, or someplace in that area. So I, I love your plan and I would like to support it. I mean, and I will support it. Uh, but if that's something that can be evaluated and maybe placed in a dot one version, that would be really great.
We'd be glad to look at that. And of course, when we look at the safety issues of all these improvements.
Yeah, and especially now that they've put up the, um, put up the cones or the, the, the bike bollards, uh, it, it probably makes a little bit more sense. I think back when Winchester was a three lane street, there was a lot of concern about placing a crosswalk there, even if we were to put the flashing lights and everything because of the white road and, and the fact that cars tend to be, uh, you know, gain, gain a little bit of headway as they're going down Winchester. But with the bollards, traffic seemed to have slowed a little bit most of the time. Um, so, and, and even if it's something that we can't do, I think it's good to put in the report and say why we can't do it now, either the cost or the feasibility of it, but it would be really good because there are, like I said, a few residents in, in my area, which is Vineland and Daves. And that do use that, that bus stop that would probably, uh, be appreciative of that and just let them know that we'll keep our eyes open for any opportunity to do something there.
We'd be glad to investigate that.
Okay, and then the, the other thing, and I, I've brought this up for a, a number of years and it never seems to really gain any traction is the walkability of the city from a lot of different areas. So for example, if you're in the Bignell area or if you're over in the Twin Creeks area and you want to walk to Dave's Avenue or you want to walk to downtown Los Gatos, you had, either have to take this ridiculous route of going down Wimbledon and even going further away before you can walk up Winchester, or you have to take your life in your hands and walk up Tito Road. At least until you get to Twin Creeks and then you can kind of circle your way through. But there are a few areas and I know when I first came onto the council, it was like the Loma Serena, uh, open spaces, it's like, you know, sacred ground and, you know, thou shalt not touch it. But it does seem like there's some opportunities for some pedestrian pathways and a couple of spaces there. And then there's also a, a, a couple of areas that we could connect those areas of Montesereno, I'll call it the, the, the west areas with the east areas. And, um, and then even along the, the highway nine areas to the Dave's Avenue areas. And I just was a little disappointed that I didn't see, again, those, those are possibilities, but why didn't they get looked at? Is there a possibility for them to get onto the plan later? You know, maybe that's a, a dot two type of, of revision of this thing.
It can always be amended, yes.
Okay, well, those are just some comments that I've heard from
Questions or comments?
From some residents and I'd love to hear the feedback on that.
Okay. So your question was, why isn't that in the report? That was your question?
Yeah.
Is there really questions?
Yeah, it's kind of a question, but again, did, did nobody come or, or submit any proposals because they've asked me about it, but, and I told them, this is the committee to go to, but I think there's a I, I think once they asked me the question, they feel like they've done the work and that's it.
There was a public outreach, the events, good process. So we can go back and look at what type of, what we have from the community. Maybe they communicated at that point or not, but we're still going to look at those objects.
Yeah, and, and I know that the council is, is not encouraged to participate in this committee, but those would be my comments here as, as part of a hearing on this.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I have a question there. Seem to be a lot of opportunities for funding, but I also know that writing a grant is a very time consuming activity. Who, who's going to write all the grants? Do we have the resources for that?
Well, we're a, we're a machine, aren't we?
We are.
Uh, so it would, we'd even have to hire somebody outside to help us with that, or if it's a simple grant, we can do that in-house. So that's a good one.
Yeah, I know, I know some cities and organizations use grant writers to, and
Yeah.
they can have a huge payoff.
Right. And then maybe something you, maybe an auction.
Yes, thank you. Okay. Any other questions? Come to them.
I have a comment.
We're not there yet.
You have to spend money to make money.
Exactly. That's what I was trying to say. Okay, let's, uh, unless there are any further questions, let's open it, let's welcome this to the public. Anybody in the chambers here would like to say a few words on this topic? Just take your name.
Good evening, I'm Lisa Shannon.
You have three minutes.
Okay, I don't think I'll talk that long. Um, I did look at the plan. I just want to remind the council that, um, sometimes you hire consultants to do a project. The consultants are going to find stuff. That's their job to find things. It doesn't necessarily mean that's what the people of the town want. What I am seeing is that where I live, I live next door, I think you all know that, that they're calling for sidewalks to go down Rose Avenue and down Andrews. One of the things that we love about Montesereno is it still maintains somewhat its rural background, rural history. There's a reason why sidewalks were not put in. I don't believe that it's something that is necessary now. I, I do see people walking. They're fine. There is enough room. I, and I see cars come down. I see people walking. I see it all working out perfectly. Um, I believe in talking to some of my neighbors that they are not in favor of putting in sidewalks. So as you look at these various projects, please keep in mind that just because a consultant said it's a good idea, that does not mean that the citizens want that particular thing. And I don't know what kind of feedback you've all gotten about the project on Winchester with the bollards. But I've heard a lot of negative comments about that. Um, I don't think people are, for the most part, are happy with that project. And so I wouldn't want to see that kind of thing come to Montesereno. So I want you to keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's anybody online who wishes to comment, please raise your virtual hand.
Yeah.
Nobody? Then we'll bring it back to the council. Any further comments? Suggestions?
Yeah, I, I appreciate your comment. And basically the Better Streets Commission is a good place to go and keep track of their meetings. They're those who make recommendations on where the sidewalks are going to go or what different street improvements are going to be made. So that would be a good place to start. And then they either come to us or they don't come to us. So that's a good place to go.
Thank you.
And it would certainly help us for you to be here and get some of your neighbors to come to the meetings so we can have, you know, transparency here and, and be able to know exactly what residents want.
Yes, thank you.
Probably want the Serinos who never get people here.
Well, I, I go there and I talk to neighbors and, you know, I get feedback and then I come here. So yes, I, I think they need to have a presence here for all of you to see what their wishes are.
Yeah, I agree. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, unless there are any further comments, I would be looking for a motion here. Move this along. Please.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Do we need to do a roll call?
Just to clarify, there is a resolution that you would be approving.
We want to approve that resolution?
Still second.
So.
Okay, um, council member Locky?
Aye.
Council member Turner?
Yes.
Council member Craig?
Yes.
And vice mayor Will Schirmer?
Yes. Motion carry. Here, so the next item on the agenda, if I'm not mistaken, is the committee and commission reports. Um, let's see. Council member Turner, please report. Council member Rizalwaji.
I, I do have a important, uh, meeting that's going on with the JPA and the city association. So we're going to report on that. Uh, as, as you're all aware, the city's association provides a formal city to celebrate Kali, which meets regularly. Uh, it has been set up as a dual body of people just, you know, there was an agreement made, but it's not a formal entity. Uh, over the last year, they've been working on making it a joint powers authority, a JPA. And a lot of work has been done by the existing, uh, uh, people that are on the committee, by the staff, by, by the council. And we had a, what a three hour meeting last try, last week on, on that, the, last Wednesday, on that second. There's a lot of discussion. Uh, the report hasn't been prepared, uh, bylaws and all those have been prepared, which I formulated by the, to the city manager and the question. And they were not involved previously, but I would request really that the city manager and the council, please take a look at it. I know you were not part of it, but apparently the previous councils of all the cities set out and made some changes to the report, but uh, we have to keep in mind what's best for Montesereno. Uh, so, so at the city's association, uh, there, there was a lot of comments, some, some pro, some negative and all that kind of stuff. So finally we kind of put it together and said, uh, the city association needs to do a formal staff report to present to each city that, that is being asked to join this JPA or UNI. And that the executive committee members of the city's association will come and present that report to us so that they can explain to, to each of, each city what's, you know, whether it's in our interest or not to join. Uh, and, uh, I, I also made a point to insist that the when they bring that report, it also provides billing information. So what is it going to cost us? I mean, we're only like point two percent of the county and, you know, we're right now, we're paying a little bit more, paying maybe. I mean, we're only like point two percent of the county, and, you know, right now you're paying a little bit more, taking maybe one percent or two percent of the bill. You know, that's one of our considerations, we, we don't want to be paying more than we need to pay, but but it's also a leverage thing, I mean, so small a city as we are, we don't have any leverage, but the city's association, we can get some leverage. So that's, that's where it is, so if they'll come to us, hopefully they'll bring the report in, or in our city council before we also get a chance to look at it. So, so that's one part of it. And I'd ask the city manager to put it on the, on the agenda, but we can, you can coordinate it with the city's association to see if they want to come and make a presentation to the entire council to, to, to understand that. But the second thing I wanted to report on, there's a presentation by the ADU, Santa Clara County has a really nice ADU organization, on Santa Clara County, their website, it explains everything about ADU, how to build ADUs, designs, planning, and all that. And we mainly to provide that to the people who are applying for ADUs, and I can have that sent to the link. And the other thing that was interesting was that they mentioned that there's a lot of subsidies that are available for ADUs, there are grants out there. I don't know if you have ever applied for any of them, but apparently there were some grants that weren't given out for ADUs and there may be more grants available for people who are building ADUs. And we are doing subsidies for, permanent subsidies for ADUs. Yeah, I think those are some of the things that would, would help us if we can get those grants, and that's another thing we need to take a look at to see what grants are available on the ADUs. That's my part.
Thank you. Councilman McCray?
So we had our first meeting of the youth commission and we elected officers and the calendar of activities we would like to participate in this year, and I'm looking forward to a great year with our, our kids.
Great. I have nothing to report on, and it will finally be a meeting on Silicon Valley Animal Control next Wednesday. So we had first in-person meeting since January. All right, that was it for the reports, any other compliments or comments?
I would like staff as well as city officials to take the COVID restrictions, you know, a little bit more seriously. It's not only affecting Monte Serrano, but I see it in other committees where council members come in and, and they're sick with COVID. And that's really not helpful for, for the public.
Thank you for that reminder, I completely agree with him. Wait. Next item on the agenda was the city manager's report. City manager Lee Hart.
Thank you, vice mayor. Just wanted to give the public a notice that Caltrans is working in conjunction with Santa Clara County Fire Department on Highway Nine. There's going to be some lane closures Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, each week now through, I believe it's October twenty fifth. So be on the lookout for that, some long, longer weighted maintenance along that route on the scenic highway, vegetation removal. And it is fuel reduction as well of being conducted by the fire department in conjunction with Caltrans. That's all I have this evening, thank you.
Thank you. Any council member want to look at, item on the agenda for future meetings? Any, no, no, no?
I, I guess the COVID thing, it's, you know, you also look at it, see if that needs to be brought back or presentation, I don't know what the current statement is and whether you're ready to do masking or not masking. You know, take a look at that. And the other thing is the JPA thing, you can coordinate that with the city's association. But then, I think that would be important to affect council initiatives.
Right? Thank you. Unless there's anything else, I will adjourn the meeting at seven thirty five PM.